Right.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everybody, to the March 18th, 2024 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge to the flag of the United States. Public for which is saying.
Rule call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Tice.
Here.
Alderman Weggie, absent. Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Alderwoman Harder.
Here.
Alderman Erger.
Here.
Seven of eight members are present.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Citizen comments is the next item. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. All we ask is that you come to that podium right there and state your name and your address, and you will be given up to three minutes. No takers, okay? But we have it coming up later in the meeting, so if you, if there's something that you would like to say, you'll have another opportunity to do so. Brings us down to the Mayor and Alderman Reports. First up is the Mayor. The only thing that I have is, I don't think I've shared this with the board yet, but, you know, we've done this cleanup along Eager Road with the help of Charlie Brennan, and he's reached out, and so we've tentatively scheduled again this year, April 19th. We'll have some more information, but if you're interested, if you can do that, and I think, I think that is a Saturday. Does anybody have a calendar open? Friday, okay, yeah. And he's got a lot of volunteers that are, that'll be there, but obviously, since this benefits primarily Brentwood, it'd be great if we'd had some Brentwood residents that could take again. It's only, I know a lot of you have done this in the past, it's only like about an hour, two hours at their absolute most to go do that, and they, they supply all the safety things, the vests, and I think the only thing they actually bring are the gloves. And our police department and fire department are there to help with the safety as well in terms of traffic, and, you know, it's one of those things that Eager Road and even the, the on-ramps and the off-ramps for 64 look great. Once we get done with that cleanup, lasts all of maybe two or three weeks, and then the, the trash comes back. But again, this is definitely one of those things, it's, it's more than just the thought that counts. It, it really is, it's a wonderful thing that he spearheads every single year, and so, you know, thank you to, to Charles Brennan. So that's it for the Mayor. Next up is Alderman Plufka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety will meet on the 27th of March here in this chamber.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tice.
No report.
Alderwoman Sims.
No report.
Alderman Lockmiller. Alderman Gould.
Yes, Communications Committee meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow night is, is not happening. We're going to move it to the, the, the next, just the next regular meeting so that we have a more productive meeting. We, we'll have a Ward Three meeting next Tuesday, so the 26th, at 6:30 at the Rec Center, I believe our normal room. And then I did, on the note of cleanup, I did get a, a response. I know that we had the honeysuckle hack that was supposed to happen in the, the wetland, and it got rained out a couple of weeks ago. That's been rescheduled, and unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to make it, but it, it's for April 20th, so that's Saturday morning. So if you're in the mood for cleaning up the Eager Road and then going and cleaning up some honeysuckle the next day, let's, let's do it.
Great. Alderwoman Harder.
No report.
And Alderman Erger.
No report.
Great. Brings us down to Item Six, City Administrator Report. We have one item under that.
Evening.
Good evening.
So last year, East West Gateway Council announced that they were taking the lead developing a Saintless Action, Saintless Climate Action Plan funded by the Climate Product Pollution Reduction Grant. And basically, what they're looking to do is put together a regional submission for a grant. And so they're looking to city businesses, things like that, to see if they could partner with them to help with these grant, with this grant application. So we talked about in the Sustainability Commission, and we cited, hey, it's really a low-risk sort of thing. At the time, East West Gateway was going to take the bulk of the funding, so it was, a lot of it was going to be paid for. And so we shot for the moon. We, we asked for solar panels on top of the community center. We asked for an electric trash truck, electric sweet sweeper, some patrol vehicles, and then obviously, charging stations for those vehicles as well. And so we, we heard back from East West Gateway, they're interested in the city being part of that grant application. They focused primarily on the solar array. They asked us a lot of questions about the solar array, really didn't talk to us about the vehicles or the charging stations, and, you know, kind of went back and forth with them on a number of things. And then a couple of weeks ago, at this point, they reached out to us to say, actually, Mo DNR is going to take over that grant process, and we're still interested in the city to be involved. They finally reached out to us, and they're interested in including all of it, everything that we put in there, which is great. But they also said that they weren't interested in funding everything like East West Gateway was going to take the bulk of it. So kind of listed what they're interested in offering. Basically, they wanted to really make sure that the applicants took advantage of any tax credit that were out there, and the big one for the solar arrays, investment tax credit, which would be a 30% credit equalling $160,000. They're like, look, you're going to get this, we want you to do that, that would actually leave only that $160,000 left for the solar array. And so they kind of talked about that. And then in talking to them a little bit more, they also said that because we are doing private charging stations, they can only do 60%. If we move them to public charging stations, they could go up to 90%, which would be even a larger increase for contribution, and so we would actually only have to pay of that $385,000, only $30,000. So that was new information from even Ways and Means. So the, the basis of this is they asked for a turnaround of a week. We quickly talked to Ways and Means. Ways and Means didn't feel comfortable having that conversation about the full board. We reached out to Mo DNR, they still are interested in the city being part of that application, and so they gave us the deadline until tomorrow so we could have that, this conversation tonight. But the idea is really, we are, we are being included in this grant application. If the city would like to be included in the grant application, we can. Let's do April 1st. It looks like if, best-case scenario, and we're able to get the ITC credit, which I've talked to a couple solar array companies since that time, and everyone says, they'd be shocked if we don't get that ITC credit. I hate to say anything's given, or 100%, because the one time it doesn't happen, then you're asking me what the heck happened. But they, everyone's fairly confident, and what I've read, I'm fairly confident, we'll receive that $160,000. And if we want to do charging stations, that would bring us up to $199,000 as the city's commitment for those, those projects. If we did that, where do we pay for it? Talked to Michelle, the easiest thing to do is look at what we're saving this fiscal year with the FEMA money. We still don't have approval on the FEMA money yet. They said, I talked to them a little bit yesterday, Friday, and they said it could take up to two months for approval for those projects. They're not concerned, it's just, it's FEMA, and as you've known, if I've stood up here enough, FEMA's just slow. So the idea would be use some of that money that we saved this year on our capital projects to do this, if that's what the board would like to do. So that is the question.
Alderman Lockmiller.
How did you arrive at the cost for the?
We got a quote from, I have it right here, so I didn't forget, from Exceptional Energy. So we at least have one quote for that. We're getting another quote from another company. They're actually giving that to you hopefully in the next week or two, but we do have at least one quote that said, that gave us the 535.
And the tax credit that you mentioned, that's cash? It's not a, I mean, we don't need tax credits.
No, basically, if, if you are a public entity, it's just a kind of a reimbursement. Yeah.
Alderman Tice.
Thank you. So I've thought about this a little bit since the Ways and Means meeting, because we got to hear about it, and I'm often of the mind that everything's a good idea when you're outside the budget process, because it's a one-off, and of course, we need new of everything when you're just talking about that one thing. But in this case, I think it's a good idea. If we can get charging stations that are valued at $385,000 for $38,000 and put them in our city, and we're, you know, I, I can't believe we would want to walk away from almost $350,000 for that. And the same thing with the solar arrays. It's unfortunate we don't have the, the cost savings that would come long-term from putting the solar arrays on top of the community center, but I have to believe with the amount that we are guaranteed, the amount that's likely for the reimbursement, that that last 160 that we would pay would come back to us in a number of years, and I think it would just be crazy to walk away from, you know, $900,000, or well, that's, that's the whole amount requested, but whatever the, the total amount, I just think it would be crazy to walk away from this money and, and when we can get these great things for Brentwood.
So according to Exceptional Energy, because they did put that in the report, and I should have put that in my memo, so I apologize, they have as a return in 10 years, is that's when we make back the money. And that's the 535 they put in, the 30% for the tax credit, and then they, they're expecting about a $27,000 to $30,000 savings in electric billing a year.
That would certainly help us on the, on budgeting, too, when we have that extra money to spend every year.
Eric, when Washington University did that project, looking at sustainability for the city of Brentwood, did they factor in what the, putting the arrays on the building? Didn't they look at that?
They did. They didn't give us a cost, but what they gave us was a design, which is what Exceptional Energy used to get us their quote. It's also Saintless Solar, why can I not remember the name of the company I've just talked to? Oh, I'm sorry. It's escaping me right now. But the other company, they, they're looking at what Washington University did for the, for their quotes and everything.
Okay. Yeah, Alderman, Alderman Gould.
Yeah, I mean, I've put a lot of thought into this as well, since Ways and Means, I, I, and I understand the argument of, of not wanting to leave money on the table. I, I guess I just struggle with the urgency of this. I don't think that this is the last grant possibility that we have for these type of projects. I think there's a lot of uncertainties that this city has right now. We're about to get into a compensation study that will certainly increase the budget for this year and likely year over year. We're going to, we've got stormwater master plan that we, we approved in 2022 with an estimated of $6.1 million at that time, $22, $22 of projects that are stormwater isolated issues that they've identified, our consultants has verified are issues. We've, we do have a budget that is going to hopefully get a bid package for some of those projects, but that's only a few of them, and I think it's, you know, maybe $180,000 of what we, and, and some of that's coming from OMCI, depending on what happens with the MSD, OMCI money might go away or a different program. There's a lot of uncertainties with that. And I think that residents, if you polled them, did a straw poll, if we had $200,000, but even if we don't, what if we don't get the 160, then it's a close to half a million dollars that we'd have to spend to do this project, I think they'd probably say maybe doing some of the streets or addressing some more of the stormwater problems, which, one of which is ranked fourth on our, on our list that we decided we couldn't do because it was close to $400,000, $500,000. So I just think that there's a lot of uncertainties that we have right now that I'd like to see solidify a little bit more before we start to invest in things that are, right now, maybe nice to have. Totally different trajectory when, when it's a mostly paid-for, we don't have the fleet yet. I know that we're talking about budgeting for maybe a fleet change. We're, we're still waiting for Amaran to see what that might look like. That's not guaranteed that we're going to be able to actually purchase those vehicles next year or the following year, especially if we, I'm not as confident with you as far as the FEMA stuff goes. It, it feels to me like what happens if we don't get approval, or we don't get approval in time to be able to actually see those funds put into place? And then all of those deferred projects that are on that go back on the deferred list of our budget, which is a lot of money, $2 million worth of capital, you know, funds. There's the uncertainty of the grocery tax that we don't know, you know, which has been estimated three, three to four million dollars annually, you know. I, I just, I'd like to see some of these things play out a little bit more before we start investing taxpayer dollars, even though a good chunk of it help, is, is funded. That just, I, it's, it makes me a little uneasy.
Understandable. I mean, again, the, solar power, especially getting solar panels on the top of the community center has been a priority of some people, and have been a priority of what has been instructed to me pretty much 10 years since I've been here.
Sure, sure.
And so, you know, this is a chance, when we, when we first got the opportunity, like, this is a chance, a far chance, we didn't think, you know, to be honest, we didn't think that this was going to happen. Like, yeah, I'm going to throw $500,000 if East West Gateway's going to pay for it, great. Little did we know that they, they were interested in it.
Change it, no, that's right.
And, and, and so even with the change with Mo DNR, to be able to do that for 70%, 75%, 70%, you know, there are going to be other grants, maybe we get 70%. I completely understand we're coming from Alderman Gould, but this is an offer on the table. And so that, you know, I, I am confident in FEMA. I mean, I've been working with FEMA a lot. They, I've, so far, have, everything that I've done has been, has been fully funded, and we've worked really well with them. It's not been quick, that has been my biggest problem with FEMA. But I've been talking to SEMA and FEMA, and they're like, look, you know, it's like, I know you're, I know you guys are interested, and I know you guys are wanting to get that money so you can start purchasing those things, it's just the timeline. So I know part of it, they reached out to the city, and I think we responded to them, you know, we have to go through different sort of cycles, so I am confident we're going to get that. If I, if I.
I understand. I'm, I'm, until we have the money, though, I feel like, I can't, I can't say, yeah, let's, let's spend money. We don't know if that savings is there yet, right?
And, and because of all the reasons you talked about, this is why we took the vehicles kind of off the rails, like, that, with everything else going on, not getting full, not getting as much funding as we did for the solar array and for the charging stations, like, it doesn't make sense to bring that recommendation to the board. But the other two, we, we do feel would be good.
And with the process of the park's master plan, was there any, I know that we haven't seen it yet, is there anything else as far as the Rec Center goes that has been identified as, hey, you know, master plan-wise, this, we need to put a second story on it to add more, I, I'm just throwing out.
No, not, I mean, nothing that would change the, the external structure of the building.
Okay.
And even if that was suggested, that building can't hold a second story, so that's impossible.
I, I'm just throwing a hypothetical out. I'm not saying we shouldn't.
Anybody else? Alderman Lockmiller.
What, we enter into this, and all of a sudden, let's just say that, because it's not a sure thing, the tax credit doesn't come through, so now we're on the hook for $320,000 in just the solar array alone, and the board decides we don't want to spend that type of money. How does that look when you've gone through the grant process and?
When I talked to the representative for Mo DNR, one of the things she said is, while we asked for a letter of commitment, there's nothing legally binding of that letter of commitment. So would we be held to purchasing that if we did not get the other credit? No. Would it look great? No. Would Mo DNR want to work with us again? Probably not. And we've had two or three different Mo DNR grants in the last few years, so it is an organization we work with. But again, I think if there's extremely many circumstances, we said, hey, look, this sales tax, you know, this just popped up, and we're losing X amount of dollars, this is not something we can fund anymore. I think we can spin it and, and let them understand why we're making the decision, and that'd be the most important part, is communicating why the city decided to make that decision, and that there was a valid reason. Grocery sales tax is a heck of a reason, and I think then, at that point, they would understand and hopefully work with us again in the future.
Because that's, I kind of have the same concerns Jeff has. I keep hearing us say we go back to the, this comes up, and we go back to the trough, well, we can maybe get this, this, probably the reserves will cover this. And then we got the threat of, you know, the food tax and other threats. We've got the compensation studies, Jeff has said, that may add to the budget. These, this, I know that this is some money that we don't, possibly wouldn't want to leave on the table, but it's also money we don't have to spend right now with these uncertainties that are coming our way. I don't even want to get into legal. So I just have a real concern on even doing, I'm in favor of the projects, I just think there'll be time for them later when we have more certainty in our, our budgets going forward. Thanks.
Anybody else? Alderwoman Sims.
I, I join Alderwoman Tice's sentiments on these projects. I think that they're a good idea. The issue at Ways and Means was more that as a subcommittee, we were not in a position to bind the board on that kind of money. You know, and I, putting aside the business relationship, if for some reason this money felt, came off the table, we're not obligated to spend any money or put, put a shovel on the ground if, if this money falls through, right? So we can, we can let it play out and, and say we, and follow our letter of commitment without actually spending the money. I know, putting aside what that might do, you know, with the business.
Correct. And like I said, she, the representative from Mo DNR volunteered that. I didn't ask, she's like, hey, it's not a legally binding letter, it's just a letter of commitment. And again, while we're talking about this, too, this is still just a grant application Missouri wants to put in, we won't even know if we, if Missouri wins this grant until later on this year. The other part I forgot to mention, too.
Anyone else? Okay, so we need a motion, then I'm assuming?
I'll make a motion that the city enter into submitting a grant, including the solar array for the community center and for public charging stations to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. Second.
Okay. And any discussion, any questions about the motion? Alderman Gould.
Would those public charging stations be also added at the Rec Center? Is, is that?
No, I think we'd, we'd look, and I, and I asked her that question, like, can we move these since, you know, this is now new information? She's like, yeah, I would think City Hall would be a good place, we could do a park. I mean, we do not have to put them at the Rec Center.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, as far as the solar array, I've always been a, a proponent of, especially since we offer those as a no-charge to people who come, you know, I, I, I do think making sure that whatever energy source is providing energy to those chargers should be a sustainable energy source. I mean, it's just by principle. So the only other place that I see that potential, placing them, is, is at the pavilion, if, if the charging, or if the solar arrays are sufficient enough for, at the new, new pavilion, the new park, is that possible?
It's possible. The two things to, I mean, right now, we are currently, are, are creating more energy than we're using in the pavilion. Now, we haven't, the playground hasn't opened yet, so we, there is some electric in the playground, and so, you know, irrigation, right? We don't know that yet.
Capacity of cars and if, a couple of those spaces are taken up by?
And then secondarily, the question is, the amount of parking we have down there, is it sufficient with?
Right, adding a couple of spots, yeah.
Now, can we be creative and do them somewhere else? We, I've been thinking about that as well. We can add more at the community center, we have capacity for it, they get utilized, so if we wanted to take, add two or three more, two or four more there, you know, I would be for that, because it is a good place to have charging stations. But my thought process on City Hall, too, is the easiest vehicle seems to transform into electric is planning, and it could be a dual-purpose, use that for public and some hours a day, and then use it for planning to charge overnight, and then we get, I'm going to boast benefits of having that station here.
I mean, I, I, I guess the most, most thing that I'm uncomfortable about going forward with any of this is, is to, at the, the speed at which we have to make a decision and commit to something, you know, with, there's a lot of, you've, you've talked about a lot of factors that are completely unknown, you guys have brought up some factors that are unknown. I kind of, I, like, if this were a year from now, and we've, we've figured out a lot of those factors, and we have a defined plan, you know, moving forward with something like this would be a no-brainer. It just, there's just a lot of unknowns, so.
Alderman Plufka.
Thanks. I, I have to agree with Alderman Gould and Alderman Lockmiller. I, I thought about this when I saw it on the agenda, and I've been doing a lot of thinking about it. I know I was the only person to vote against the ordinance that says we had, new construction had to include a dedicated line into your garage for electric vehicles, because I thought we were too much in the business of promoting particular industry, and I don't think that's our role. I, I, some of my problems with this are that, but most of my problems are financial. I, I, my concerns about this are that we have too many things. I'm, I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to deal with all the different unknowns that you guys have already mentioned, but I just feel, I, I just feel like this is not... I think these are, this is an evolving industry, and it, there will certainly be tax incentives later than this, and there will certainly be programs, and maybe our city will be better positioned to be able to set money aside in this way, but in my opinion, I don't think that time is now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Rule call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
No.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
No.
Alderman Gould.
No.
Alderwoman Harder. Alderman Erger.
Yes.
Vote of four to three. Motion carries.
Do we need five? I, or does it? I can't remember what the rule is when we need majority of the board for resolution, or we're, we can wait to Kevin, because?
Does that require you to vote, then?
No, I can't.
Oh, you can't?
No, because it's not tied. Here we go. We need the referee, we, we need the referees ruling on this. We had a four-three vote. Is that enough to carry it, or do we need five yes votes on this motion? Majority of who's here. Okay, so it does, then. Okay, so count of, I think you had four-three, so the motion does pass. Okay, all right, thank you. Brings us down to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda, or a request to remove any of the items? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder.
Yes.
Alderman Erger.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Old business, we have two items. First up is Bill Number 6487. Can we get a second read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6487, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance abending ordinance number 4810 and 4602 for the conditional use permit and site development plan for Chick-fil-A restaurant located at 8590 Eager Road within the Dearburgs Brentwood Point Shopping Center.
We get a motion to perfect Bill Number 6487, Alderman Lockmiller. Sure, yeah.
And do I need to offer an amendment, a tax amendment, from the, the original 6489 to now the 6489.1?
But we're on 87.
87.
Chick-fil-A. I was so excited.
Hey.
Spoiler alert, but yes, you will.
Don't foreshadow anything.
So you have time to work on that between now and then, yeah. So can we get a motion to perfect Bill Number 6487, and only Bill Number 6487 in ordinance four?
So moved.
Anybody have any questions about that? We need another presentation by the, by, by Whitney? No? Okay, rule call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderman Erger?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, Bill 6487 will become ordinance 5117.
Right. Thank you. That brings us down to Bill Number 6489.1. Can we get a second read by title only, please? That's okay.
Bill Number 6489, second reading and consideration for adoption, and ordinance amending Article 6 of Chap, Chapter 215 of the Brentwood City Code relating to firearms.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Well, I kind of thought this had to come first, before the second read. Doesn't matter. All right, motion to perfect Bill 6-
I'm sorry, motion to amend would be in order before the motion to perfect.
Motion to amend Bill 6489 with Bill 6489.1.
Okay. Okay, so we got a motion to amend Bill Number 6489 with 6489.1, and a second. Any discussion on that? Alderman Sims.
This amendment knock any of the teeth out of the ordinance that was initially proposed? Or is it just amending maybe some of the-
Amendment consists exclusively of the prefatory clauses.
The whereas?
Takes, takes a little flourish out of the finish.
Takes the florid out of the flourishes, yes.
All right, those are my questions.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Is this a simple voice vote on, on this amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, do we need a second reading on this, or do we just get a motion to perfect? Motion to perfect Bill Number 6489.1 into ordinance form, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce? Alderman Waggy? Oh, he's not here, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderman Erger?
Yes.
Seven to zero, Bill 6489.1 will become ordinance 5118.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for supporting me on that. Next up is the New Business, which is Bill Number 6491. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6491, first reading and ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the redevelopment project area two of Hanley Strassner Redevelopment Area, dissolving the special allocation fund relating, related thereto, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Thank you, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Dimmitt. This is another opportunity to tell a positive story on how the city has used a tool made available by the state of Missouri for economic development with great fiduciary responsibility and accountability for the continued betterment of the city of Brentwood. The TIF districts are established by state statute for no more than 23 years. Hanley Station TIF District was established on September 15, 2023. The city designated MLP as the preferred developer of the area. The area, Hanley Station, is an eight-acre mixed-use project consisting of 150 Hanley Station condominiums, retail and restaurant uses, and a 123-room hotel that opened August 15, 2008. The condominium sales and hotel occupancy have greatly exceeded expectations. There is a two-five-story covered parking located on Hanley Road at Strassner Drive. Tenants of this mixed-use project include Spring Hill Suites by Marriott, Jimmy John's, Aspen Dental, Sally LeMond Mexican Grill Brentwood, Christina White Salon, White Box Catering, and Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar. Back in 2015, when the city did the refunding of, of this district, Stiefel had predicted that this would retire early, May 2025, rather than the full 23 years, which would have been 2026. Instead, the final debt service payment was paid in July of 2023, retiring it three years earlier. As such, staff is asking the board for the consideration of the termination of this ordinance. And this is the last TIF district in the city. After this, the city has none left. We can take on more debt.
Alderman Plufka.
I just, I wanted to amplify some of the commentary from our City Administrator. This is, there have been three before this that were all retired early as well.
Absolutely.
One heck of a track record for the city and the retail power of the city. And I just wanted to say that, as you kind of said at the beginning of your comments, this is a sometimes maligned and sometimes misused development incentive. But I think in the four instances that we can talk about it, this being the fourth, it's done nothing but revitalize the city on the north end from Brentwood Square to Brentwood Promenade to Brentwood Point and now Barrett Station. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, well, we will be taking this up for a second read at the next Board of Aldermen meeting. Brings us down to citizen comments. As I promised, there would be another opportunity for any of you in the audience to come and address the board. Now is the time to do so.
Online.
There to be anyone online either.
All right. Well, then, that's it for the open session. We do have a request to go in the closed session tonight pursuant to RSMO 610.021 subsections one and two, I believe, is it. So can we get a motion to that effect, please?
So moved. So moved.
All right, any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims? Alderman Lockmiller? Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderman Erger? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, everybody.